Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of April the 11th, 2023. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately this evening in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine your comments to the specific request before the board. For requests to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope that this provides you a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you. So let's take attendance.
So noted.
Okay. And I'd like a motion to approve the Zoning Board of Appeals minutes of March 14th, or any corrections that are required.
So moved.
So we have a motion to approve and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is granted. I'd like everyone in the audience to know that Item 1T, which is 3930 Devon Gables, has been postponed and will not be heard this evening. So if you're here for that item, we will not be taking it up. And also, Item 3, which is 866 Rock Spring, we will not be taking that item up either. So for the first appeal, we'll have Carol step in for Andrea since she was not present, and we'll have, we'll call the first item, Item 2T. Is applicant ready?
Yes.
So you can state your name and address and summarize your request.
Hi, I'm Demond Avantin. I'm the homeowner of 368 Middlebury Lane, Littlebury Hills. I was here back in February, and I was asked to come back with a plan, with the revised landscape plan. So I'm back here with the revised plan. If I can point to the changes here, all this, I'm sure you've seen this before, but all these light green, evergreens are there from last October, last fall. I've added, I'm recommending or suggesting I'm adding additional evergreens around the screening. These up here are facing the Middlebury side. They're nine to 12 feet high. All the other evergreens around the neighborhood here, around the neighboring yards here are six to eight feet high. I'm suggesting I'll add more evergreens around the existing screening, about the six-foot high evergreens. That's going to cover any visibility to the streets.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I just want to clarify with the staff. I wasn't here in February, so I can't vote on this one. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I wanted to ask a question. With regard to the screening along Wadsworth, have you added any since, added any or planned to add any?
Yes.
To the east of the garage?
Haven't yet. So Wadsworth's on this side here.
Yes.
So these were, they are already there from last fall.
Yeah.
There are about four or five evergreens here that were six feet high. There are some more up, which you can't see, there are some more on this side, past the garage in the front, there from before. So I'm suggesting to add the dark green ones over here.
Okay.
So it'll cover completely any visibility from Wadsworth's side.
And if I can, that was what I was going to ask, that those were the ones that were requested by the association?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public. Has anyone here would like to comment on this item? Okay, if you could step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Robert McMahon. I live at 3675 Middlebury, which is on the west side of this property at the corner. And I, by way of comment, you have a letter from me in your file from the last meeting, and it was forwarded to you for this session. So that explains my position in terms of supporting the structure that he has there. The, I wanted to remind, I also would mention that I'm a member on the Westchester Committee for Architectural Committee for passing on advice on facilities there. The thing I wanted to make sure was understood is this, in the true sense of the word, is not a fence as much as it is just a tall shielding encompassing in the center of the yard. It's not on the outbound areas of the yard. And if you've had an opportunity to scrutinize the landscape plan that was presented to you, you would see that. It's a solid panel unit, and it doesn't present any, there's a picture of it on the board now, doesn't present any appearance to the outline of the yard that is already fenced with a conventional fence. And on behalf of myself and a number of the neighbors in the immediate location around this home, I would suggest that, if possible, everybody get in agreement and approve the new landscape plan presented to you and move forward.
Thanks very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? So I'll close the public hearing, and then you can come back up. I don't know that there's any necessity for you to respond to the comments, so any other questions from the board?
Could you just take a second and make sure that your microphones are in front of your?
My sole objection to what's been done has been what I call insufficient evergreen screening along Wadsworth. What's there is fine, there just needs to be more of it. And so that would be the only, the only thing that I would add to your request if it were to be put in a motion.
So the plan, if you can go back to the first slide, please? Right here. So are you okay with this plan here? I'm got evergreens on the Wadsworth side.
No, 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 no. The, the-
Where do you want me to put greens?
The fence that we're, the fence that we're seeing, I don't have a pointer. Where's a pointer?
Here.
You know what? Forget it. The fence that we're seeing is right here from Wadsworth.
No, inside the green area.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there, inside that.
But we're also seeing this.
That's the cabana.
That's the cabana, I understand. But there's fencing along here.
No, sir, there isn't fencing there.
I drive, I drive by that property every day, coming from the east towards the west on Wadsworth. I can see, you're right, okay, I see that, I see the cabana, I see the fence. I see the fence on a regular basis. It needs more screening on the Wadsworth side as they indicated in the architectural review plan from the east of the garage to the property line.
So that's what I was showing you, the plans all along here, I'm going to put greenery all along here. That's what's was view. So I'm going to plant greenery all around here.
What he's saying is that's shown in the landscape plan you received, that there is new growth to go in?
Then, then I'm going to apologize for not, for not having properly understood the plan as presented. My apologies.
No problem. So if you want to go back and show it one more time?
No, you're fine.
Any other questions?
That's what I wanted to clarify too, because the association was clear on that. It looks like that new screening will seal.
And the coloring on the drawing was a bit confusing, so.
Well.
So, so can we make a motion now that we're sort of clear on the plan and the position of the association?
If you would like, I will even do that.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for you to, it'd be good for you to start us off.
So let's, let's deal with the request, the permission request for dimensional variance at 3680 Middlebury Lane. Request for dimensional variance for the fencing that is in place, the six-foot fence is, is fine. I am going to move that it be approved based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. The property is unusually situated at the corner, and as a consequence, the need for screening and the need for more than the generally necessary four feet is, is in this instance appropriate. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. In fact, the Architecture Review Committee of the Association has signed off on it. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated again because of the, the site that we're working with, which certainly has not been self-created. With that having been said, application for, all necessary permits must be made in, within five business days for the existing fence. The additional evergreen screening, as has been presented, is sufficient, and all that needs to be added to what is currently there. And that's it.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted, and that vote would not include Stephanie. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're calling the next item, Item 3T. So Carol, thank you very much for coming. It's always a pleasure to see you.
You need to press it correctly.
We don't, as much as we would enjoy having you stay, we don't need Carol.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. And so now Andrea, you can come back up, but you, you're not able to vote yet until, until we get through the postponed items.
Okay, good.
So if you could state your name and address and summarize your request.
I'm Randy Heike with Action Fence, 4300 Delamere Court, Willoughby. We're coming back in front of the board. Kind of went back and forth with the neighbor a couple times. This is the final plan that my customer would like to move forward with, which is moving the fence approximately three feet off the property line, which is halfway to where she wanted six feet off, which kind of puts it very close to the sewer, sewer covers. We've now had two separate surveys, and the septic company out to locate where everything's at. We're actually going to fence right through the middle of the field because she can't go down the hill, basically. It's right at the top of the hill, so. And they're proposing, if needed, to even plant some evergreens along that, on their property in that three-foot space to cover it from the neighbor.
Okay, and then where were the, because part of it was to locate, can you show us on the, that plan, where the septic?
So the two drain covers are right here.
Right there, okay.
You got your two cleanup covers, and then this dotted line is the field itself.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
So is there a concern about putting it through the field, the fence?
I mean, we're going to find something.
Okay.
They've agreed to repair anything that we find, because they don't want to go down the hill for fear of her daughter falling.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to put a gate in the middle there so that she can, we can get lawn equipment through, but, you know, it's really it.
So I'm going to open this up to the public. Has anyone here would like to comment on this? You can state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Christine Peterson. I live at 4873 Keithdale Lane. I'm on the east side of 4891 Keithdale Lane. With regards to the septic caps, they are in about the center of the back of the house. The first basement, you can't see so much with that picture there because it doesn't have the dimensions, but the first basement is about 14.67 feet from the side of the house. Septic caps run right along about there. And so there's about six to seven feet between the property line and the corner of the house. So there's at least 20 feet between the property line and the septic cap, so I just wanted to mention that. Also, on the opposite side, just so you know, I lived in the house when the field was installed. The field is much more heavily weighted to the west side, and these pictures don't do it justice. Because of the nature of the hills and being on the curve and the homes being set on curves and stuff like that, taking views from it can create illusions as to what you're looking at, but there's at least double that much space between the caps and the westerly side that, as well. So there's a lot more space on the westerly side. I'm on the east side, which is very close to the property line. But the caps are at least 20 feet from the property line. And so, so what I would like to note to the board, with what's been presented so far, how does the existing code interfere with the use and enjoyment of the property? What is the particular difficulty in this situation? I'm not seeing it. I have looked at the application. What are the unique circumstances that necessitates this request? I'm not seeing that. Compliance with the code provides ample space and footage for dogs to run and be safely contained with the yard and function in the yard. The code does not limit the ability to use a property for that purpose. It was stated in the application that it is impossible for the disabled daughter to navigate the hill. I wonder if a smaller enclosed space would be safer and more manageable for the daughter to navigate due to her mobility issues. I also wanted to add that I have seen the daughter walk up and down the hill many times with her dog since she moved in without any difficulty. As far as unclear boundaries and property lines, which has been mentioned in the application, the recently completed certified survey provides that clarification, so there's no issue there. Landscaping can also provide an aesthetically pleasing and appealing effective solution to divine the space in the areas of concern where the fencing doesn't provide the enclosure. All current homeowners, at least in my neighborhood, who have fenced in yards also have pools. Because of the elevation of my house and the curve, the fence would be highly visible from my sunroom, living room, and kitchen. I took a picture today, but my printer was running out of ink before I came, and my color printer wasn't working, so. I do have a picture to kind of show it, but it's pretty grainy. So this is a picture from my dining room, and this stake here is on the property line. Again, this, this, the septic, whatever you call those things, are much further to the westerly side of the house, and that's where all the curves and the angles and stuff kind of create illusion. It makes it look like they're a lot more closer than they really are. The fence, they're talking about putting the fence three feet inside, so I would have a bird's eye view of that fence. Another important concern I have is setting a precedent with this decision. There doesn't seem to be any unique need or practical difficulty in making, in making this a special circumstance. I also would like to say that I did negotiate with the homeowner last time, as suggested, which I appreciate, and we took it outside. I suggested that they keep it, they have the fence go off the back corner of the house on my side, six to seven feet in. I'd still have a bird's eye view of it, but it would be six to seven feet within the property line, and it would be a significant distance from the septic caps. Denise Berks did agree to it. As I walked back in the room, I heard her tell her contractor, "I'll be able to see the fence from my window." Okay? So by the time we came back, they decided to postpone the meeting. Okay, so I just, I feel that this isn't necessary. They can have the space they need for the dog and the security of their daughter within the confines of the code.
Thanks very much.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Step forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Eric Clark. I am a resident of 4774 Keithdale. I am also on the board of the Neighborhood Association for this area. I object to this granting of a variance for many of the same reasons that Chris voiced earlier. First of all, we find that there is really no need for it. The backyard is sufficient to place an enclosure for the dog without any need for the variance. We find that this is really a request for convenience for the homeowner so that they don't have to look at it, but it would, of course, cause all their neighbors to do so. For those reasons, we ask the court, the board to deny the request.
Thanks very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Excuse me.
We have a question. There's a question. If you could step back.
I have a question. Are you speaking on behalf of the board, or are you speaking as a homeowner in the subdivision?
A homeowner of the subdivision.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Because as, as you know, well, typically, a variance would come to us before it comes here. This did not. This request just came immediately to the board.
Okay. Thanks very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing and let the applicant respond to the comments. Any applicant's representative?
Thank you. So I will agree with the neighbor. The caps are roughly, I would say probably 14 feet off the property line. I do have a picture of it, but let's say it's 15 feet, but those caps are the center of a tank, and the tank expands both directions from that cap. So do I have that room? No, I don't. Now, I think we're being more than fair by bringing it in off the property line and offering to plant evergreens so she can't see it. I think even if we held, let's say, the strict letter of the law and brought it in 16 feet on both sides, the neighbor on the left's still going to see it, the neighbor on the right's still going to see it, but it's just going to make my customer's yard that much smaller. So we're really not, it's really not a visual thing. Even if we stick to the strict letter of the law and put it in an impossibly small area in the middle of her backyard, it doesn't do anything for our customer, and the neighbors can still see it. And it would be right with, in the letter of the law. So I think this yard, being the shape that it is, the small sliver that it is, my customer's disability, be it that it's coming and going, it's not an everyday thing. Some day she's perfectly fine, some day she's, she can't get out of the couch. So I don't think we're asking for a lot, and we've offered to screen it.
And where is that screening going to go? Can you show us with a pointer?
Right along that side. Right toward neighbor's side.
Along the outside edge, okay.
Yep. So we brought enough, bringing in enough to put in arborvities, whatever you guys would like.
And so it's just on the one side, it's not on the other?
Just that, well, I would, again, they would be open to screen whatever you guys would like, because there's already trees here. There's big pine trees here.
There are, they're kind of high up. But you're still seeing the vines.
Right.
So that, that's okay.
Problem is, big pine trees, you can't plant anything underneath them because nothing will ever grow. But up front here, yeah, we could definitely plant some here, but there's an eight-foot double gate you're going to put there as well, just so you can get the backyard. So it's difficult to-
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question of the township. Is it my understanding that the reason this variance is before us is not because of the fence? It could be on the property line, all around the perimeter of the property at the rear? It is about the fact that they have a dog?
The dog containment fence, correct.
So what, what's interesting is I haven't heard anybody complain about the fence. I have heard people, I take that back, I haven't heard anybody complain about the dog. I, the fence could be at the property line and wouldn't need a variance. That, I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
Yep.
Unless, as long as, if, if there was no dog.
Correct.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, if this were a matter of small children, we wouldn't be standing here. I would have just put it on the property line, and that would have been it.
Any other questions on the board or discussion, or ready for a motion? That's a valid point, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 4891 Keithdale Lane, I am going to motion that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty, the location of the septic tank, disability of the resident, the need to fence in the property remains whether there is a pet or not. I have had, I have heard no complaint about the fact that there's a pet, only the complaint that there's a fence, and for that reason, I am going to determine that compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. This will in fact be screened to the east, and you can't plant across the septic field, so that's, that's enough. Unique circumstances of the property, I believe, have been demonstrated with both the narrowness to the back, the pie shape of the lot, and the fact that we do have that septic field in the back, none of which is self-created by the current property owner. And I believe that should a new owner come in who doesn't have a dog, this would be a moot point. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and other than the evergreen screening to the east, screening the fence, I see no additional need for, for evergreen screening on the, on the request.
Support.
So I motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, Item 4T, 4345 Willoway.
Hi, my name is Gina Wolchlager. I am the resident at 4345 South Willoway Estates Court, seeking approval from the board for an existing sport court, an existing shed, and then proposal for a fence on the southeastern side of the, of the court to create privacy for the neighbor. I've explained last month the hardship in planting full evergreen all across the south border due to, I do have a picture in here of an aerial view of how covered my, my yard is with nine or so giant oak trees. It would be very difficult to maintain arborvities along that whole fence line because of the shaded area, but to plant them where, any, any place where is feasible, we have, we have no problem shielding the fence from, from that point. And then we will also be covering it from the street view, the arbors will cover the street view, and the arbors will be planted in front of the shed to, to block the, the neighbor's view, and that, there's, there should be no variance request on the shed.
You have any questions from the board? So I know there was a lot of discussion with this, and I realize it's, it's not just your sort of typical fence because it's eight feet high?
I actually got it quoted for six.
Okay.
So I have cut it down to, I talked with the landscaper, so it is not eight, it'll be six.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? So I'd like to open this as a public hearing. Does anyone here would like to comment on it?
My name is Karina Yanak. I am the southern neighbor.
I'm sorry, your address is?
4359 South Willoway.
Okay.
I am the neighbor to the south. The court is five feet closer than the 16-foot it's supposed to be, but that's okay with us. We don't have a problem with, with that as long as some vegetation will- We don't have a problem with that as long as some vegetation will appear to block the fence, we're good with that. The shed on the other side is on the side of the property. From what I know, sheds are not supposed to be on the side of the property. There is no hardship for locating the fence anywhere in the back of the property. The property is about half an acre. I would like to not see it. Where it is located is very good for the property owner because it's not in their view, but it is in the view of most of my property, and it is, I see it every time I get in and out of the grudge. It is offensive to me. It's also visible from the street. So unless vegetation that's fully mature can be put there so that I don't see it, it's fine. But just little arborvitae is not fine. It would have to be something that...
It would have to be screened from public view twelve months out of the year.
From our property, which is to the left and from the street.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone else like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Judy Goldis, and I'm directly behind on the east side at 4344 Sunningdale. I was really surprised that this went up, but my main problem is there's about this much in height from that property to mine, which you don't see. And I don't know if the fence is going to take care of it or what's going to happen to water, and that hasn't been addressed.
Okay.
But it's, I'm five feet, and I'm almost eye to eye with it. The other thing is, as far as evergreens, I would suggest thulagian arborvitae. They grow three feet a year. And my main reason is to have these big trees is I'm constantly collecting pickleballs, hockey pucks, miscellaneous stuff because it's whacked over. And another thing that just hasn't come up is like how late sometimes it's being played, and my husband hears the hockey pucks. And I think maybe evergreens of some sort, I don't know if they go over this fence that's proposed, but right now, they do go through my evergreens that are quite tall, and so I just kind of would like to not have them pocket night.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else would like to speak on this? So I bring it back to, so just kind of tangentially, what are the ages of your children?
I have a nine-year-old, a 14-year-old, and an almost 16-year-old.
So they sound very active and enjoying the space.
Voice, yeah.
Okay.
And I totally agree with the ball coverage, and that is why we wanted to get something more permanent in place to avoid that. I can put up netting on my side of the arbbs so I can alleviate the ball issue. I totally agree. That is not acceptable. In terms of, we, I don't disagree with the fact that it was built up, but that wasn't our doing, that my property was that way when we started. Those arbbs, we put those arbbs in before we put the court in along the whole, I guess, eastern side, so the Sunningdale neighbor's side. There was a, there's always been a drop-off right there. That's always been a downhill, maybe one more, is there another picture? Is there more? Maybe one more? So, oh, go back one. That's okay. Nope. Yeah, I had other ones.
Do you have another photograph?
I don't have it there. But we are planning to plant something on that, there's, it's kind of an empty spot. In my landscaping plans, it does involve a big evergreen pine tree on that side of the fence to alleviate it. And 1,000% mature arbbs are going in, that's what was quoted by my landscaper. I'm not getting the tiny ones, I'm getting ones to cover the fence height and the shed height.
Okay, so it's going to be to the height of the fence and the shed at the time they're planted, which is, which is what our ordinance requires?
Yes. Yes.
So I just, I want to go back into the, I think there's a picture with the, there's an aerial view that showed the landscaping. I just, I kind of want to understand. Can you go back? Let's see, yeah, that one. So on the picture on the left there, are the arbbs that you're describing, they're going to be the height, are just going in the corner?
So that's where the fence will go. So the fence will go, because that is where, that's the exposed part of the street. I just need to be able to have entrance in and out of that backyard area. So yeah, that's where the fence, the fence will only go less than halfway the distance because the rest of the court goes into my yard, and my house covers it.
So the fence is from here to here?
Correct.
And then, but what about along here?
All the way, all the way along that southeasterly...
That's the part that's severely shaded.
This was, I'm sorry, this is actually not the plans that, actually, I have, these are, this is a better one.
Is that the better? This was submitted, and so is this.
So if we have a better one, that's good.
Yeah, I do. This is, this is the revised. So the shaded ones are the existing arbbs, and then this is, this is the plan. This was what the neighbor to the south would see.
Oh, you can see the shed there.
Yep, yep.
The fence will be there on the south?
The fence will be on the south, the fence will not be on the east. That's you, right? Are you?
No, I'm on the east.
Yeah, it wouldn't be on the east, but I'll put, I'll put netting up to, I'll put netting up so you don't see it to prevent the balls from going into your yard. Sorry, yeah. And I will apply, but, you know, I understand the guidelines with daylight, and the hockey was, you know, that's a whole separate...
Right, it's just supposed to be daylight hours.
It is.
Okay, that's good.
And you get caught up in the winter a little bit differently because the, I get it, yep.
You have very active ages, so we get it.
Yep, so, but we will keep it to a neighborly...
Might break a few rules or something. Okay, so these are boxwoods here?
Those are boxwoods, and then I'm plant, I would love to plant ivy too, anything to help with the fence covering.
Ivy will do it.
Yeah, so ivy, yeah, I think you need ivy all along here.
Yep, yep, and that's, I mean, that's just, you can't...
So these are to the height of the fence.
Yep.
These are to the height of the shed.
Yep.
Boxwoods and then ivy covering this whole fence.
That's correct.
That's what you're representing tonight.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mine's five feet, yeah.
I think we have a clear picture of the structures that are being proposed and the screening. Any other?
I have a question. Here it says eight-foot fence.
It does, and that's what was submitted, but it's going to be, it's going to be six.
Six feet, yes.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns people have? This is the last of the tabled items, so...
Is it okay if I just stand here?
No, you, we've closed the public hearing, so you're not, no, no, you can't. There's no additional comments. We've closed.
I'm still worried about the light.
Yeah, you...
Mr. Chair, you might want to get clarification on the netting that's being referenced.
Okay, so where is the netting?
It's just, she won't see it. Those arbbs in the back are 12 feet. I planted, we planted all of those. They won't be, they will just be along those arbbs on my side, just some containment for a court netting, so she doesn't, so nothing gets through.
So wouldn't the netting be an additional variance?
More than four feet in height.
Yeah.
I can do a four-foot, it's literally, they roll through, so I'm just doing something to prevent them from rolling through.
You're trying to prevent those...
Just to try to be a good neighbor so she doesn't have to collect them, because I get it, I totally get it.
So four-foot netting helps us a lot.
Sure, yeah, sure. Anything just to literally alleviate that.
Yeah, as much as you enjoyed coming here, you probably don't want to come back.
Do not want to come back. I have three active boys. They need food.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? About the netting, the boxwoods, the screening, the fence, the shed.
That's the plan on that hillside where you're concerned too. The, right there. Just so, just so she's...
So I need a motion, one way or the other, from one of the courageous, intelligent board members that have served the township, so ably...
All right, I'll take a stab.
That would be very much appreciated.
I mean, need help. Okay. I'll start...
Cookies at the next meeting.
I want two boxes.
All right, two boxes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the permission. I'll start with a permission request first in regards to the appeal at 4345 South Willow, oh, I'm sorry, Willoway Court for the sports court as well as the shed, the accessory structure of the shed. I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure shall not be objectionable to the nearby residents by the fact that it will be screened and that the resident has made all kinds of accommodations to make sure that the screening will be at the height of the accessory structures, including the fence, and will also put up some netting to capture balls, and so therefore it would not be objectionable. I also want to move to the variance, and I move that it also be approved for the sports court in the shed. I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, basically because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without this variance for the height of the fence as well as the accessory structure, it would not be reasonable use of the sports court. You do need a fence at that height. And there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because, again, there's going to be robust screening at the height of all of the structures. The unique circumstances of the property as well, that seems to be the most appropriate area for such a sports court, as well as the sloping of the property and the sloping topography, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing sports court. An additional evergreens, as have been presented, may be required to screen the sports court or fence shed from public view. The sports court is limited to the daytime hours, as we discussed. There's no illumination permitted for the sports court, as well as going to add to the motion that there will be a four-foot netting also included.
Support. Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
And I'm sure your children will be very good to you on Mother's Day for all the work that you've done for them. All right, calling the item one, which is for, excuse me, 968 Yarmouth. Here's the applicant here for item one, 968 Yarmouth.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we, oh, I'm sorry.
So why don't we get public comment, so I think we might be able to take this one.
I'm not the applicant. I'm Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village Association. This property on Yarmouth Road has, the request is for a generator. The only place to locate this is on the right side of the property, right side of the house because of the configuration of the driveway, and then there are windows and doors all the way across the back of the house, so there's no way to put it on the back. In order to get it far enough away from windows, it needs to be located on the outside of that AC unit. The plan is to move the existing screening and supplement it as necessary to screen the generator from view, both from the street and from the adjacent neighbors. This did come before the village board. The village board approved it and also recommended that you approve the variance for it to be more than five feet from the house, so it doesn't meet the required immediately adjacent of three feet. So that's the variance request.
I think we do too, so we still have, thank you, Kathy. Anyone else would like to speak on this? So we'll close the public hearing. I think we've already had a very thorough view by Bloomfield Village, a good, concise, well-constructed presentation.
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay, great.
So in regard to the appeal at 968 Yarmouth Road regarding the dimensional variance required for the proposed generator, which is not located immediately adjacent to the residential building, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards of practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the setbacks of the lot. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it'll be screened with evergreen plantings. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated due to the fact that there are windows in other areas where the generator could be placed, and it is not self-created for the same reason. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, the request is granted. Calling item two, 3571 Burning Bush. Here's the applicant here. State your name and address.
Brandon Yono, 3571 Burning Bush Road. I'm the homeowner, requesting to move the air conditioning units and generator to the side of the home.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Which side of the house is it again? West side, east side?
East side.
Okay. I just want to disclose the fact that I am a neighbor and receive notification, but can make judgment fairly.
And we agree. So we'll open this as a public hearing, as we have comments from Kathy and the village.
Hi, the board did review this one. This property also has the same challenges in the rear yard in that there are windows and doors all the way across, in addition to a patio on the back, leaving only that right side, left side, or east side, let's call it, as the location for the generator and the AC unit. This house is only set back, I think, 16 feet from the lot line, so to locate those units on the side would require a variance. Our board did approve this and recommended your support of the variances.
Thanks very much. Anyone else would like to speak on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, have the pleasure of doing this.
You're on a roll, keep going.
Okay. With regard to the appeal at 3571 Burning Bush for the dimensional variance for the side location of a generator, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the size of the lot and the current setbacks. Further, there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors because it'll be well-screened. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given the fact that there are windows in other locations the generator could be placed, and it is not self-created for the same reasons. Again, if approved, the motion must include all application for necessary permits to be made within one year and all permits to be obtained prior to installation, and additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the units from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the units at the time of planting.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So item three, as I said, has been postponed. Move to item four, 4390 Oak Grove Drive.
I'm Ellen Yurks with Antoinette Landscape, representing Norris and Dahlia Nager at 4390 Oak Grove Drive in Bloomfield Hills. We are seeking approval for this sports court today. It's 30 by 60, and it's going to have a proposed mesh fence to keep the ball containment. There's a perfect photo of it. And this is actually encroaching seven feet into the 16-foot rear yard setback, as well as 10 feet into the 16-side setback on the west side. Because this sports court has a location in the lot that made sense based on the vegetation, this isn't very visual from any of the neighbors. There's the west side where it's completely forest, as you can see on the... There's the west side where it's completely forest, as you can see on the lower photo. The first photo there is just of the front of the home, which shows established trees and their beautiful lot. And then on the other side is also, yeah, there it is in the backyard. So this is the location of the court. They already have those evergreens and all the mature trees surrounding them, and the view to the east is lined with larger evergreens where there is a neighbor, but they do have a lot of vegetation to screen this naturally without any additional screening. And we will be having to excavate some area to flatten that for the sports court, so you'll see that in our drawings, and we will be installing a French drain system to accommodate the new drainage system that's changing as you put in a hard surface, so that is our request.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Andrea, can you put up the overhead, please?
That one?
No, the...
The aerial?
Yeah, the aerial, that's what I meant. Apologies. That's the one I meant. Okay.
Do you have the photo with the, that I submitted with the aerial and the drawing in it? Very, it would be like more close-up to see what we're doing, just to help them visualize.
Yeah, because I had the same question when I first looked at it with the staff, is why the dimensional variances, but there's really, really large driveway there.
We know it's a driveway.
Yeah. It takes a big part of the backyard.
Well, the house is back.
What's the total lot coverage for our hard surfaces?
A bit. Yep. Okay. That's the only, Andrea, that's the only thing I wanted.
I just, I sort of told him I had the same impression when I first went over it with the staff this morning, is I wasn't clear on why this location was needed and the need for the dimensional variances, but if you look at the lot and how much the driveway takes, you really have a very, you know, limited amount of space to locate something like this, so I'm assuming that's the reason.
Correct. And the location of being in the corner of the yard there is just what made sense for the court not to be intrusive.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, any other questions from the board?
So I'm not sure if you know, but the property 5544 in the rear, is that a sports court?
They also have a sports court. But the photo that we show where the Arbor Vady Row is, so they can't see their neighbors, so it's behind that, it's on the other side of that there on the hedge, so no one gets to necessarily, if only they could share one sports court, but everyone needs their own.
Well, then you wouldn't have a home court advantage.
Ah, love it. Gotcha.
You're going to have home and away games here with very little travel.
I think there's going to be some competition.
Helps the budget for the team.
I have a question. So there's been discussion about hard surface areas, like percentage-wise, at least in the planning commission. Do we know what the hard surface area is of the lot, like the percentage?
No, we do not have that calculation. That really was relevant to structures.
Okay.
Not paved surfaces.
I thought it was paved. Okay.
No, so the reference, we did have a discussion, you're absolutely right, but relevant to our permitting process is relevant, and our 30% threshold has to do with structures.
Okay.
Right on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll open this to the public. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, if you could step forward and give us your name and address and your feedback.
Yeah, my name is Jack Turner. I live at 5505 Foreman Drive. If you switch back to the aerial, I'm on the northwest corner that's just cut off to the north of 5525. If you don't mind.
Okay, up in the top of the picture there?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, top right.
So my yard contains a pretty large drainage area, a pond that was flooded. So for reference, usually that water recedes about 10 to 15 feet from that patio. This patio comes up about eight to 10 inches from my lawn, so my concern is with the drainage plan that's coming with this, right? If this is another impermeable surface, right, you could see along the neighbors' route, we have another sports court, another pool, and if we have more floodwater coming into my yard, it's going to cause, you know, flood damage into my home. I do have a pump that moves this water down my driveway and down Foreman to drain into Wing Lake, but there's no way to get this water out of my yard fast enough. It comes into my yard from across Foreman Drive, comes into my yard across Corton, it even comes in from Oak, I can't remember the name of the street, I'm sorry, it's Oak Grove?
Oak Grove.
Yeah, Oak Grove, that's correct. And so my concern is that...
So are you in a low spot, or it sounds like you're getting water from a lot of different directions?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's a routine, yeah. So my concern is with the drainage. Dumping it back into the woods is going to shoot it straight into my yard, not directly, but that is where the grating directs the water, right? And without an appropriate way for me to evacuate this water from my yard, it's going to come into my house and cause damage.
Okay, thanks very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? You could step forward and give us your name and address.
Well, how do you...
No, you're skipping. You look like you're floating.
Recovering from a torn, completely severed left quad tendon, so...
Ooh.
Yeah, I don't reckon...
How did that happen?
I took one step up to get to my porch, and my leg collapsed under me.
Oh.
That's all it took, I just fluke.
Okay.
But not pleasant. My name is William Wickers. My wife and I reside at 5565 Foreman Drive, which is immediately adjacent and to the west of the subject property.
Oh, yes.
We object to the proposed variance. For example, there are several issues with it. It encroaches within six feet of our back lot line. Now, we've maintained that lot in a natural condition since we purchased it for both the environment and the wildlife in the area, and to preserve the natural amenities that have been there that have attracted people to the area. This addition or proposal would come within six feet of our property, and I don't know how they would meet the requirement to screen it with evergreen or deciduous foliage in a six-foot plot or strip and be able to maintain that. It's true that it's wooded, and that wooded area does screen it from the back of our house to some extent, but not completely, and particularly not in the winter months when the foliage is pretty much all gone. So that's one issue. Another issue would be lights. I don't expect that most sports courts are ignored in the evening, so they want to light them, and this light would be intrusive. It's, there's no way to prevent it from going over, and the closer it is to the lot line, the more it comes over our way. There are lights, as it is, from that direction with headlights coming down the street to the south of the subject property and in the driveway of the subject property, and this would just aggravate the situation. You might notice that one of the previous items on the agenda was also for a sports court. That sports court was about 47 by 27 feet. There's no need to have a sports court this large. If you'll do a quick Google search on sports courts, you'll see that they range in all kinds of sizes. 60 by 30 is just sort of the average, but there's no need to have one that large. So in this case, the person who's applying for the variance is bringing this problem on themselves of being unable to comply with the township ordinance setback requirements. There's no need for it, there are reasonable alternatives available. Might not be as pleasant, it might not be full-size, but it certainly provides them with the adequate opportunity to enjoy the amenity of having a sports court in the backyard. When I was out there yesterday noon, I saw no evidence that any survey had been made to locate the property line and ensure that if it's constructed, it will in fact meet whatever setback is set by this board. I would expect that would have to be done prior to any construction, and I'd expect that the board would require it if they were to approve anything to be constructed there. But again, it's unnecessary. It doesn't have to be this large or as intrusive, and it doesn't need to create the problems for the neighbors that it inevitably will with the noise and the light and everything So anyway, that's why we object to it and believe that you should not grant the variances requested.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If you could come forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Mick Sherba. I live at 4398 Oak Grove on the east side of the lot in Question Air. I'm also the Broton Park subdivision president. I'd like to just make a couple of comments for the record, if I may, and the Nagers have followed our Broton Park subdivision longstanding process for evaluating improvements of this magnitude. We, a dimensioned architectural drawing was prepared. I sent that to every one of our Broton Park subdivision homeowners, asking them to review it and to cite any concerns they may have. I had received concerns, several concerns. I sat down with the Nagers and talked through each one of those concerns, explained them, and the Nagers acted in good faith by addressing the concerns that our neighbors had, and they were the typical concerns like visual screening, no illumination, water management, noise. Noise, in particular, pickleball was a big concern of the several neighbors, and the Nagers indicated they have no intentions of using the court for pickleball, and that gave our subdivision a lot of assurances. So with those assurances, we sent a vote out to, again, all of the Broton Park subdivision property owners. The vote came back, and the homeowners all approved, as well as the subdivision board approved the project as presented in the dimension drawing. I'd also like to just make a comment relative to Mr. Turner's and Mr. Wickers. I grew up on Foreman Drive in the bend in 1955, and I, as a kid, played in all those fields. I got stuck in, when they were building your house, in the chimney flue and how you see. Anyway, long story short...
Wait a minute, we don't need to go back.
I'm very familiar with the Mr. Turner's corner lot where the low land collects water. However, if you look at the topog, I'm an engineer, by the way, if you look at the topography of this site, the water does not flow north toward Mr. Turner's lot. It actually flows towards my lot and south toward Oak Grove, and then from Oak Grove it goes down to the lake between two different property owners, so the water will not flow north into the Turner home, into the Turner property. You could look at the topography map and verify that.
So when you said you circulated the plans and that all the homeowners approved it, does that mean you got a response from everyone, because we just heard two objections tonight?
No, I should state, I circulated...
Is that a majority or something?
It was a majority, yeah. It was circulated to everyone.
Okay.
And when the vote came back, the board met and the board approved it. It was a clear majority of the homeowners.
I see, so you got the feedback and then the board voted to, okay, based on the feedback.
Correct. I think there was just one out of, one that was, wanted to see more information, didn't say no, just inconclusive.
Sure, yeah, there's always some questions. Okay. Any other questions?
Are there lights as part of this plan?
No.
No lighting.
No, a number of questions.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this? So you already gave your comments.
Just a quick response if you want to...
So you're not entitled to respond, so. So I'm going to close the public hearing and then bring it back to the applicant for... So I have a list of things here. I don't know if you want to talk about noise, the light, so there is no light.
There is no light.
The size, the drainage, and then whether a survey's needed, so that was...
Sure, so I'm glad Mick touched on the drainage, the topography, and the survey. They did have a professional survey done by an engineer, so that's one thing, and because of that, we can see that, I mean, even in the photographs, you see that what he said is true, it's going towards the east property and towards Oak Grove. Let's see, additionally, yeah, we've made a 30 by 60 sports court that is a bit smaller than the one that's behind at 5544 Lakeview. Anyone could have a smaller court, but anyone could have a smaller house than 3,200 square feet, but that's the accommodations that people want to enjoy, so this is what we're asking. For a sports court to have both basketball play on both sides, additionally, because it's painted for basketball, it's not painted for pickleball, they're not interested in pickleball or the noise that would create. What else do we need? Anything else you want to add?
We failed to mention we have four children, five and under, so size-wise, 60 by 30 gets you 1,800 square feet. Divide that by four, you're at 450 per square foot for each kid, so I would say it's...
They're very territorial children, I'm assuming.
Very, yes, and we're just sick and tired of our house getting destroyed.
Yeah, okay.
We need space for the kids to be kids.
Need some escape room.
Yes, and I need my office back because I need privacy, so.
All right, you're good. And so did you say there's a drain that's going in?
Yes, that's correct. The plan shows the drains that we're going to add to accommodate for the extra runoff of that space that runs in their lawn.
And Patty, as part of the township approval process, they're going to have to approve the drains, right? So I'm sorry, the public hearings, you could ask maybe after the meeting, but the public hearing's closed.
I'm actually curious where the drains go.
Okay.
Or you mean where they go, go. Yes, let's pull that up. So this is, yeah, this will catch the runoff and, oh, this is so small. But there's the natural flow, everything actually goes out to Oak Grove and then beyond to the, between the homeowners to the other side of the street with, thank you, towards the lake.
South is town, yes.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not the...
Yeah, pull it down.
Okay. Showing off my tech abilities right now.
The red button.
Perfect. So our little arrows show towards the French drain here, so that water will go this way and then it goes eventually through properties on the other side, because there's a lake right here in the map. It doesn't change where the water has ever gone. It all is continuing the same route. We're just adding this area so that the runoff from this exact 30 by 60 area is that way, is on board with every...
Well, my point to Patty was is the township's engineers are going to approve the drainage plan for this.
Part of the plan review process, absolutely.
Yep, okay. Any other questions from the board?
I noticed it's also sunken a bit, right? Is it down a little bit more? Did I...
It's excavated, yeah, this picture helps show the amount we'll have to excavate to get that flat space for that surface.
Okay, so you're going down lower instead of building up?
Correct.
No lights, daylight hours?
There's no lights. There's a four-foot netting.
Four children.
What's that?
What's the purpose of the electric outlet?
There is an outlet that is to be put into the landscape, that was something they requested. This way they can plug in a speaker, like, what is it called? Those chargers and so forth, you know? They just wanted an outlet.
Isn't that for the heating pad for when Dad joins the four children?
Well, I guess so.
No, no, there's no...
This guy's a farmer, so I'm not surprised if he's going to plug in his lawn, you know, lawn equipment and so forth, too. lawn equipment and so forth, too. So you have another outlet to use your leaf blower and so forth on the court.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? So we are ready. Do you have enough detail to make a motion? About the location, how the drainage, size, four children?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request and request for dimensional variance at 4390 Oak Grove Drive, permission request first. I'm going to move that the request for the sports court be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. And the applicant, the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to either topography or lighting. And as a consequence, I'm going to then move on to the request for dimensional variance, which is the placement of the sports court inside the side yard setback, the easterly, excuse me, the rear yard setback and the westerly side yard setback, and move that that variance be approved as requested as well. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. In fact, we've got very little rear yard for this property, and I think the appropriate use, the appropriate availability of a sports court that is not requesting excessive fencing, will not have any lighting, and will in fact remain screened to the adjacent neighbors is also ample evidence that it produces no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Unique circumstances of the property, I think, have been demonstrated again because of the size of the property, the location of the house, and the lack of what I'm going to call available good rear yard, which certainly is not self-created. I also want to applaud the homeowner for having taken sufficient time to look at the topography to make sure that this is not going to exacerbate any already existing water runoff that could be -- could occur because of the placement. Of course, the township will be monitoring that in its permit process. With that having been said, application for all permits must be made within one year and prior to installation. Additional evergreen screening may be required to screen the sports court from public view, although I didn't see any obvious evidence of the need. Use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours, and there's no illumination permitted on sports courts.
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion?
Yes, so I just want to comment that, so I did have concerns with regard to the drainage, and I appreciate the discussion about where the water will go and the fact that the water's not going to flow north, it will flow south. I am still a bit hesitant with regard to this because of the encroachment, and I understand that the family doesn't plan on using it for pickleball, but the fact of the matter is maybe they're not going to live there forever, but the sports court will still be there, and potentially that use could result in additional noise that would be disruptive to neighbors, and keeping it within the setbacks could help to alleviate that. And you're talking, you know, one setback, it's encroaching seven feet for the required 16, and then 10 feet into the required 16. So it's almost half of both of those, so I just have some concerns about that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so I'm going to do a roll call.
Faqee?
No.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ford?
Yes.
Chia Grande?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kittleman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
I just do.
Thank you, Board. Have a good night.
Calling the next item, item 5, 6770 Halyard.
Hi, my name is Barbara Erbile, and I'm a new resident of the 6770 Halyard Road.
Okay, thank you.
And we just moved there in January. I'm seeking approval for an 8-by-10 foot shed located at the year -- I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous -- rear of the yard that would be screened from the street as the association asked with evergreens. There's a raised bed across the driveway, so the shed could go behind there, and then there would be evergreens around that. There's a lot of trees separating, as you can see, my property from the neighbors. The neighbors are lower to me. My husband had a stroke six years ago, so I'm looking for something to store a scooter in. He's not here today, but it would help me to be able to not have a garage that I can't use, so.
Thank you very much. You did a very nice job. Any other questions from the board? I'm going to open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to make a motion.
That would be great.
Okay. In regard to the appeal at 6770 Halyard Road for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood given the documentation provided from the Neighborhood Association that this structure would be compliant with their deed restrictions. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation, and additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the shed from public view.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Calling item 6, 2554 McClintock.
I'm Tony Lockard. I'm with Mary Grove Oning. We're the contractor and representing Kerry and Charles Pantland in this matter.
Okay. So did you want to summarize the request for us, or?
They're looking at a pergola, a motorized louvered roof is what we call it, and it's a simple structure. I think we fit within all the setbacks.
Yep, it's just a permission request. Okay.
Encroaching within the setback area. And it's pretty much what you see there. It is mounted in the back of their house to the roof line, and then --
And that existing gazebo is going to come down.
It goes away.
And then it's going to be replaced by --
Well, it's the fence that is shown in the photo.
All right.
And this will replace that structure.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. If anyone would like to comment on this item. Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
With regard to the permission request at 2554 McClintock Road for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits and must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I'm not so sure this is required, but additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen. It's not a pergola, it's an oning, right?
It's a pergola, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. The pergola from public view.
Support.
I didn't see it that way. Okay.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I had a relationship with the next appeal. I was a client, no longer working with them at this point, but I can make a fair assessment on the case.
Okay. Appreciate your disclosure. So calling the next item, item 7, 25370 West 14 Mile.
Yeah, we have a --
Your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Dan Bush, 25370 West 14 Mile.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bush.
We have an existing six-foot privacy fence between our lot and the neighboring lot, and that privacy fence is now, that was existing when we moved into the house nearly 20 years ago, and it was probably there at least 10 years prior to that. And so it's kind of reached the end of its useful life, and so we're looking to replace the fence with a, with the same height fence. And that's a picture of it.
So that's not the type of material we typically see. What is your thinking behind that? You want sort of something that totally blocks the view and?
Yes.
I mean, you didn't want an aluminum fence?
Current fence is wood stockade, isn't it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm Susan Bush. I'm his wife, and I live at 25370 West 14 Mile. And I'm speaking to this because we did remodel, and we have stone on the bottom of the house, and also we have a pool area that has some bricks and some landscaping wall and stuff. And this color scheme ties in with everything that's in our backyard, and it's also natural in color. I have asked my neighbor, my neighbor has submitted an email. She's the only one that can see this on her side, and she is totally in favor of this color and the pattern.
The fence is not visible from the road. The lot is, the lot is a hill. We're higher than the road, and then the elevation slopes down, crests at the house and slopes down into the backyard. So the fence is not visible from the road at all. It's only visible from the neighboring lot that submitted the email supporting the motion. And there's a natural border in addition to that on the other side of the fence between that fence and the neighbor's house.
Natural screening?
Yeah.
Do you have the email, by chance?
We have a copy.
Yeah, we have it.
Is that Andrea?
Okay.
How?
Yeah.
And you're --
25300 West 14 Mile.
Okay, great.
And then your current, the fence that's there now is six feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's really decrepit.
Yes, yes.
If you sneeze too hard, it could fall down. That's how that is.
So you're replacing the wood stockade fence with the solid, the solid fence?
PVC, yeah.
And it'll be, it'll tie into the six-foot aluminum fence that's already on the property?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this for the public hearing. Anyone would like to comment on it? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion for the request at 25370 West 14 Mile Road. I'll start with the permission request. I move that it be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the fence will not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property due to the fact that there is already a fence there, and this will look much better than what's currently there. With regard to the dimensional variance, I move also that it be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the topography of the home, and there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that there is currently a fence there. And as I previously stated, what's proposed will look more aesthetically pleasing. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given the, again, the topography and its location on the lot, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. I will also add that the application for the necessary permit should be made within one year and should be, and the permit should be issued prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the fence from public view, and the finished side of the fence, which I don't know that we have that in this case, but I'll add, should face the exterior.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
May I ask one quick question? How soon can the permit be applied for?
Anytime. You can come on to the apartment tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So calling the next item, item 8, 71 Douglas Drive.
Hello, I'm Dawn Burton, 71 Douglas Drive. I am requesting to install either a aluminum or wrought iron five-inch fence directly behind my house.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Open this to the public. Anyone that would like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
Is this a dog containment fence, is it?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Was there a particular reason why it needed to be five foot instead of four?
I have a very large dog. That's a jumper, and I just want to keep my neighbor safe and everyone else.
Fair enough.
It's always because of the jumper.
Is there a reason for the dimensional variance? Excuse me. Is there a reason for the dimensional variance, the encroaching into the setback?
I'm not understanding.
So does the fence have to be laid out the way it is in those exact dimensions?
Yeah.
Or can it be moved at all to comply with?
We have a --
If it comes in, if it comes in the additional 19 feet that it's encroaching to the rear yard, that would make it --
Well, it looks like they're trying to line it up.
Nine feet on one side and 19 feet on the other.
Because you're lining it up with the edges of your house.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the reason.
Just makes it an extremely small enclosure.
Just to line up to the box. Yeah. And it lines up with the edge of the house.
Yeah, well, the two side yards, I can understand. The rear yard's the big setback, and without it, it makes the need, it reduces the utility of the fence down to about zero.
The jumper wouldn't like that.
It could run from one end to the other and not have to move.
Any other questions? So, let's see, I opened the public hearing on this? Did I? Well, I'll do it again. Anyone like to speak on this? Close the public hearing again?
I'll make a --
Just to be sure.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if there's no other questions. I'll start with the permission request in regards to the appeal at 71 Douglas Drive for the proposed dog containment fence. I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure should not be objectional to nearby residents for the mere fact that it aligns with the home, which makes sense, and it will also keep the rest of the neighbors safe to keep a jumping jog, dog contained. In terms of the dimensional variance, I also move that variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without a dog containment fence, it would prevent the homeowner as well as the neighbors to contain the dog. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because of the alignment with the home and the orientation of the home. The unique circumstances, just because of the unique size of the lot and the existing floor plan of the home on the lot, it makes the best sense to have the fence aligned with the home, and because of that, it is not self-created. The motion also contains, if approved, applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. There may be additional evergreens may be required to screen the fence from public view, and just remember that the finished side of the fence must face the exterior.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 9, 4675 Avondale. Avondale Terrace.
Good evening. Tianxi SuJie, SuJie Engineering, 4031 Coolidge Highway. The applicant's engineer, he asked me to speak on his behalf. Long story short, the applicant's property butts Avondale Terrace, which at one time joined to Kensington Road. When the railroad was constructed to the northeast, the road was severed from that connection. And what last few decades has become a remnant, it's no longer used. I actually didn't even...
So, it's a road on paper only?
Correct. It's a cladded subdivision road.
This is sort of a technical requirement.
It is. And there is a, an adjoining road now that joins to the west that takes place for the road that used to, for the connection that used to be there. So, we're basically looking for a variance for a front yard, which is really now a side yard, is the short of it.
Very well said. Any questions? Open this up to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing and bring it back. I think it's kind of, picture's clear on...
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion for this.
Thank you, Stephen.
So, with regard to the appeal, this is at 4675 Avondale. I move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the placement of the lot and the topography there. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact of where the lot is and where, the fact that there was a railroad over there. There's really no neighbors. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given the topography and the location of the lot in the township, and none of this is self-created due to the reasons stated above. Let me just get back here. Is there, the application for all necessary permits have to be made within one year and should be obtained prior to installation? And what else am I missing?
That's it. That's all.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So, item 10, 1315 Porter's Lane.
I'm John Beninati with Beninati Pools. I'm here on behalf of the homeowner. So, on this particular project, there is already, let's call it a landscaped seat wall with a portable spa inside of it. You can see it back there in the corner. It sits up about two foot tall. The rest of their projects, the project's in really good shape, however, the spa pool thingy has seen better days, and they'd like to remove it completely and replace it with a shotcrete spa stone cladded with a limestone cap on it. We would like to lower it about six inches so it's not so big and intrusive, and clad it in a natural stone. It'll give them much more swimming space inside of it. It'll be safer for them. It'll be at seat height so they can get in and out of it easier. And of course, it'll have a, a new cap or spa cap on it for safety so they can lock it down. We'd like to bring it about two foot closer to the house. It's going to be a little bit longer, and it'll be about a foot narrower overall. This, this has been approved at a prior date, this whole project, a number of years ago. But the, the spa needs improvement. This is a walkout basement. It has a sprawling deck or balcony across the whole thing and windows. There's really no better location to put the, they will require in-ground pool equipment because it's, let's call it a spool, call them spa pools that size there. It does require in-ground pool equipment, and there's really no other way, place to put it other than behind those existing arbors. We like to reconfigure that whole area there, screen it better, and set all that equipment right there in that location.
So, when you say screen it better, is it's going to be screened from public view then on the sides?
Yes, those existing arbors are nice and large.
Yeah.
But we're going to have to open it up wider to fit that equipment in there and then put some more screening in there because there's not quite enough there to satisfy you guys.
Well said. Any other questions? Open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on the spa? Or what do you call it? It's a...
It's a spool.
Spool, I'm sorry, the spool.
Technical.
I want to use the right terms, didn't want to throw you off here, it's spool. All right, close the public hearing. Anyone else that would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 1315 Porter's Lane, I'll start with the permission request first for the accessory structure of a spool.
Spool, yeah. That's why we come here every month to learn new things.
That's right.
I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood. Although I don't see any spools, I think spools are pretty cool. I see a lot of spas.
Oh!
I'm rhyming.
I like the way you worked on it.
And these are very common accessory structures. In terms of the dimensional variance, also for the spool, as well as the spa equipment not located immediately to the residence, I also move that that variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. To put the spa anywhere else as well as the equipment would not necessarily make sense. This is probably the most logical place for it. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Actually, the upgrade to, from a spa to a spool will actually probably be much more appreciated by the neighbors as well as...
They'll make a big splash in the neighborhood.
As well as...
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
That's okay, that's okay. And the fact that it will be more of like an in-ground, which I think will also be pleasing. The unique circumstances of the property, again, because of the walkout, this would make the most appropriate space based on the existing floor plan, and because of that it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreens, as the applicant has suggested or planning on adding, will be required to screen the spool or swim spa from public view. And additional evergreen screenings may also be required to screen the pool equipment from public view and must exceed or, must meet or exceed the height of the unit of the equipment at the time of planting.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you for your time.
Calling the next item, item 11 for, excuse me, 5486 Brookdale.
Good evening. My name is Todd Zott, and I'm the homeowner at a home under construction at 5486 Brookdale Road. We are asking for two approvals. As you can see, the lot has two front yards along both Brookdale and Big Beaver. The home is situated to face Big Beaver while the address is Brookdale and the entrance is off Brookdale. So, the setbacks off Big Beaver and Brookdale are both considered front yards. So, the first approval we're asking for is to try to find a place for the air conditioners and a generator. And because we only have either the north or to the west, the west is driveway and garage. The north, starting to, on the east side of the north, we have a egress from the basement, a patio area, and then a walkway out. So, trying to take the air conditioner and the air conditioners, there's three, and a generator, and take them about 16 feet off the northwest corner of the house, screen with large arborvitaries, and that exceeds the 32 inches away from the building. The second request is for a fence to be allowed on the Brookdale side, which is considered a front yard. Yes, thank you.
Any other, any questions on the board? So, I drive by here every day. I think it's not, that lot has been there for some time, so it's, it's really nice that you're building there. So, it's a very nice area. I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment?
My neighbor to the north is Ed.
Name's Ed Hock, 5470 Brookdale, and that puts me on the north side of his property and actually the only neighbor he has.
Other than the cars driving on.
And I have no objection to approve both of his requests.
Thanks very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Thanks for coming, Ed.
Yep. Close the public hearing then, bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion. I just, so we need it for the, the units that are proposed and the fence?
And the fence, yep. It's two parts, yep.
Okay, so I can't do them together? Or I could? Okay, anyway, let me just get started.
I think you have enough talent that you could do them together.
Yes, I hope so.
Counselor.
In regard to the appeal at 5486 Brookdale Road for the variance for the three air conditioning units and the generator, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the lots placement on those two roads, Big Beaver and Brookdale. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that we have heard here now from the only neighbor that he has and is supportive of it, and again, due to its placement in the township, the lots placement in the township. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given its location at this intersection of Big Beaver and Brookdale, and these are not self-created due to the reasons stated above. And I'll just add, with regard to the fence, I have the same reasons to approve with regard to the compliance, no injustice to the neighbors, and the unique circumstances of this property and home. All necessary permits should be made within one year and must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen planting shall be required to screen the air conditioning units and the generators from public view, and that planting should meet or exceed the height of those units at the time of planting. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the fence from public view, and the finished side of the fence must face the exterior.
Support.
So, I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 12, 6091 Franklin.
My name is Sanjay Lakani, homeowner, 1691 Franklin. The request is to grant variance, a dimensional variance. The back side of the house is architecturally very understated. We're trying to make some pleasing changes to the back of the house and therein ties this request for the addition, which would serve as a library, office, workspace. And we tried all different permutations, combinations, to try and, you know, fit it within the confines of the rules, but it, it wouldn't work. And so, we unfortunately have to get a little six-feet encroachment into the northern side neighbor's, the setback. And he, we did discuss with him before we came here. He was fully in support of that. We did speak with the homeowners association. They were also verbally supportive of that. I think they were supposed to make it in here today for their support, but that's essentially what we are requesting. Approval of...
Thank you very much. Any questions? Open this to the public. If anyone would like to speak on this, if you could come forward and state your name and address.
Brian Ritter, 6800 Franklin Road. I'm speaking on behalf of Wing Lake Farms. And Mr. Sanjeev has graciously followed protocol with bringing his application to us prior to submission to the board. And I personally reviewed the property. I presented it to the board, and we stand in favor of Mr. Sanjeev's request based on visuals from the adjoining neighbor. That wall that they would be encroaching on is virtually windowless, so it wouldn't have any negative impact on a view for the neighbor itself because there's just no windows on that side of the house. And based on the unique pie shape of the lot and its specific location, the fact that they're not encroaching, he's, he's made an effort, I'm sorry, he's made an effort to keep within the lake limits and keep the property back. The addition on the rear of the property is not going any further than the boundaries of the existing property itself, and that we feel the side yard setback encroachment would be far better for the lake and the community itself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this? Close the public hearing. I don't think that you need to respond to that because it was so positive, so well, well done, and I'm sure they appreciate the fact that you followed the proper procedure. So, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 6091 Franklin Road, I would move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, making the utility of the home, failing to improve the utility of the home. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. In fact, the adjoining neighbor where this would be most closely seen would be unseen because they don't have any windows on that side of the house. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated by the utility of the property and the fact that it does back up to the lake. We do not want to encroach any further, do not want to go out any further to the lake. And of course, none of this is self-created. With that having been said, if the motion's approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
So, we have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling the next item, item 13, 5391 Lauren Court. 5391 Lauren Court.
They're not here.
They're not here. So, I don't think that this is a complicated... Patty, could you present?
Sure. So, we have a five-foot fence in the easterly side yard and rear yard. It's outlined as presented.
Aluminum fence.
And it is aluminum.
And if it wasn't a five-foot fence, it wouldn't require a variance.
Correct. If it was four feet, it would not, yes.
So, we, not clear on what the need is for the five-foot, but...
Can you add anything about the height? Four feet to five.
So, in, in one of the letters in support, it talks about deer and protecting children from deer.
That's right. That's what it was. Yeah, thank you.
Five-foot fence isn't going to keep a deer out.
Well...
And it does note on the plan that it can be...
Makes them feel better.
Black aluminum fence.
Unless the deer are tired and they don't want to jump.
16 footer out here on...
Okay, I'll make a motion for this.
Wait a minute, let me just, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on the fence? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and go ahead.
Okay.
Let her rip.
So, with regard to the dimensional variance at 5391 Lauren Court, I move that it be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome in this case because of the fact that there is a lot of wildlife and there are some children that need to be protected from Lyme disease and other issues that deer may present. There is no justice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it is a very common thing to have these fences in our yards. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated. Given its location in the township, and again, the fact that they have some young children living there, this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. The application for all necessary permits should be made within one year and prior to installation. Additional evergreen planting shall be required to screen the fence from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the fence at the time of planting, and the finished side of the fence must face the exterior.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 14, 3245 East Breckenridge Lane.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's David Black. I'm the homeowner, homeowner at 3245 East Breckenridge Lane, along with my wife, Beth. We're requesting installation of a generator. I can cut through everything. I think we've complied with the code as much as possible, and basically, we're asking for a three-foot variance rather than the generator being 36 inches from the house. We're asking for 72 inches because of windows. So, it's for safety reasons.
Thank you for that concise and effective presentation. Any questions? Open this up to the public. Anyone like a comment? Close the public hearing and bring it back for a... Close public hearing and bring it back for a motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion here with regard to the appeal at 3245 East Breckenridge Lane. I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. On this day and age, I don't know how anybody can live without a generator. And due to safety reasons, it has to be placed where it's being proposed. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbor by reason of the fact that we're going to require that it be screened from public view. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given the safety concerns and the windows that are, where they're placed on the home. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated. And I will add that all necessary permits must be made within one year and should be obtained prior to installation. And you will have to screen the generator from public view with evergreen plantings that must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Support.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling item 15, 4113 Telegraph.
My name's Derek Huskin. I'm with Kirk Pump and Supply. This, we're asking for a variance for a generator to go in the front of this property. This is a condominium association at 4113 Telegraph. We replaced the, this is a sewage lift station and we, that big blob in the front there was all removed and right now they have submersible pumps in the station. The controls, which were used to be under that blob, were relocated to the adjacent building A in the basement. And the association would like to have a backup generator for their sewage pump station. And because all of the controls are right there in the front and it happens to be the front of the property, we're asking for this variance because to put it in the back of the property, it's hundreds of feet and it's not really conducive cost-wise or, you know, labor-wise.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Seems to me there's a critical need.
Critical need, sure. And we're eliminating a blob.
Yeah.
So open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close public hearing, bring it back.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at 4113 Telegraph Road for the generator. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Because of the unique circumstances with all of the controls in the front of the building, it would make sense to put the generator there. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors as well as they had a big blob there before. They're just going to have a generator in its place. The unique circumstances of the property, again, on the existing floor plan and where all the controls are, it makes sense to put the generator there. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the generator from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 16, 42855 Woodward. Is anyone here on this item?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you bring sandwiches?
I'll assume this will go, this will go freaky fast.
How are you guys?
Very good. So if you can state your name and address.
Samples so they can prove who they are. Yeah.
My name is Mike. The address, 288, no, 2855 Woodward.
Okay.
I have a Jimmy John's. Oh, there. This is the new one.
So it's the new logo and it's, it's big.
Same size, everything.
Yep.
And just the JJ before the circle, this circle. But same thing, same size, same--
Same size, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll open this to public comment. Any two gentlemen in the back want to comment on the Jimmy, new Jimmy John's logo? Okay, then I'll close public comment. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion here. With regard to the appeal at 42855 Woodward Avenue for the dimensional variance, I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that this is a franchise and they've changed the logo. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that this is located in a commercial area with similar signs. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location in a commercial area. And this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I will add that all necessary permits should be made within one year and all permits should be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thanks so much.
And two, the two very patient and, yeah. Patient gentleman for item 17, 43572.
This is an early one.
Good evening. My name's Paul Loosely. I'm with Environmental Engineers. We are the civil engineering consultants on this project. Is being located at 43572 Woodward.
So can I help you? So this whole plan got approved. You got to the landscape plan and the trees are too close to power lines, so you need a variance.
That is correct. We're asking for a two-foot variance to plant the trees eight feet from the power lines. The project landscape architect has worked with the township landscape architect to select species of trees that should not interfere with the power lines.
So in all the years I've sat on the board, I don't think I've ever had a variance of this nature for--
It's the first.
First one, okay. So I'll open this to the public. Anyone here that I can't see that'd like to make a comment? Close public hearing, bring it back.
As long as he doesn't feel short-changed on the presentation, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
I just thought you guys--
Please do.
You guys, you guys have heard enough. We don't want, yeah. Shouldn't have to exert any more energy.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 43572 Woodward Avenue, I am going to move that the dimensional variance for the placement of the landscape trees be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. In fact, we, we are not getting any objection from DTE or the township for the placement of those lines. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors. They are just trees. And the unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated because we've never